I'm not that tall. Hi, everybody. Welcome. I'm going to ask the board for an agenda item change. Steve Seedor is on the phone, our board attorney. He needs to be part of this conversation. His time is precious, and I don't want him waiting on the line for an hour to hour and a half while we go through the rest of the business. So would it be okay if we moved under new business item number A up to right now, number three? Have this discussion and then get back on schedule.
And make a motion to move that item to right now.
Okay. Shannon has made the motion to move the agenda item. Do I have a second?
A second.
Dennis, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. So we will have the discussion. Thank you very much for that. So ladies and gentlemen, several meetings ago, we had a member of the public come in for public participation, presented an exemption note to the police officer out front, and was allowed in with that exemption. We now have other exemptions in front of us. So that I have a better understanding of the governor's orders and the exemptions, I reached out to Joe and our board attorney, Steve Seedor, for explanation of what the governor's orders are and how these exemptions are to be handled, especially at public meetings. I don't want to deny access to somebody at a public meeting and have liability come to the board. So I will ask Steve to explain, and then we can have some conversation about it and understand the situation. So Steve, it's Dave. If you could explain, I'll move the mic if necessary. Can everybody hear? Steve?
How do you voice put the mic there?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
All right, go ahead, Steve.
All right. Thank you for having me, everybody. Steve Seedor. I want to begin by saying that what I'm going to talk about is limited to exemptions and mask requirements, attending board meetings in school buildings, and that's where I'm going to limit what I'm talking to. The next thing is, I know people hate lawyers for saying this, but there's no, at least in this situation, definitive 100% right answer. We live in times that haven't been subject to precedent. And so all I can do is give you my opinion based on what the executive orders say and what the competing guidance says. So to begin with, I wanted to start with the governing executive order, which is 13A. And what it does is it says that it is delegating to the Department of Public Health the authority to issue guidance that will implement its rules, saying that there will be certain buildings in which masks must be worn. One of those buildings are school buildings. Now, in Executive Order 13A, there is an exemption that says those with certain medical conditions are not subject to this order. And this is what's going to be important later as we discuss this, and that's the standard by which the exemption applies. Because in the exemption under the executive order, it says specifically, all you need is this document from a medical care provider stating that the exemption would apply to you, and it specifically states that the documentation you need to provide shall not be required to name or describe the condition that qualifies the person for the exemption. So it's a low standard in that executive order. When you then take the next step and you look to the Department of Public Health implementing guidelines, the latest one, which was issued in November, excuse me, and I think it's important to read it, what it says is, quote, "Subject to the exemption provided in Executive Order 13A, all individuals regardless of vaccination status shall wear a face mask covering at all times when," and this is where it gets to where we talk about school buildings, "inside pre-K-12 public or non-public school building." But it indicates that it occurs, and that is required, when students are present, and it gives these examples, such as when fully vaccinated custodians or office staff do not have to wear a mask on a weekend or after hours when students are not present. So if students are not present in the school building, I think it can be fairly argued that masks, either number one, can arguably not be required, or number two, the medical exemption would apply. But here's where I think it gets a little difficult. It gets a little difficult, maybe not necessarily who you are or why you're there, but it becomes a difficult issue based on whether students are present. Because notwithstanding those two orders, the State Department of Education issued its own, I don't want to call them rules, but I'll just define them as they are defined, as the Adapt, Advance, and Achieve documents for the 2021, 2022 school year. And in that document, it invokes and references Executive Order 13A and, well, at that point, an older DPH commissioner's order, and references what is to occur when students are in session. But this is the part that is important. It says that "The need for a medical exemption for the wearing of face coverings of the styles recommended for use in schools for source control is rare. Medical contraindications to the wearing of cloth or other similar loose-fitting masks are generally limited to individuals suffering from severe chronic obstructive pulmonary disease such as might be seen with cystic fibrosis, emphysema, heart failure." So bringing all that full circle. If students are present when the board meetings are taking place, we're at a spot where neither the executive order or the Adapt, Adapt, and Achieve was really looking at. They were not looking at situations of board meetings, at least as far as my opinion goes. Because when you have a board meeting, you may have other things going on in the school if students are present. You may have student representatives at the board meeting. So I divide this into two finite situations. Number one, if there are no students present, in my opinion, under the executive order and the DPH's orders, the fair argument is that the low standard of the medical exemption applies. All you need is a doctor's note that says you have a need to not wear a mask. The argument could even further be made that masks are not required at all when students are not present. When students are not present. On the other hand, when students are present in school settings, which is what I believe that the Adapt, Adapt, and Achieve was set to apply to, you have a high standard. Those who have a medical exemption have a much higher standard, and medical exemptions should not be granted freely or easily. Board meetings kind of run in between. You might have some students present, but it's not a school setting. So you really have competing standards, which applies the lighter standard set forth in the DPH's order, or the governor's executive order, or the higher standard in the Adapt, Advance, and Achieve. I can't tell you which applies, because I think they are competing, and I think they are conflicting to some degree, and there's no cases, there's no further guidance, there's nothing else to guide you. So I guess the best thing that I could say is, to the extent there's less and less and less students, the stronger argument is the lesser standard of the medical exemption applies, i.e., a doctor's note that simply says you need the medical exemption governed. The more and more and more students are present, the more I would lean towards saying the Adapt, Advance, and Achieve standard applies, which is that the medical exemption should not be granted lightly. I don't know really how to otherwise define the competing issues, because, as I said, these are unprecedented times, but those are the standards, those are the laws, those are the executive orders that apply, and that is exactly what you have to grapple with, at least for the limited issue of allowing individuals at board meetings. So with that, I'll open up the questions that you may have.
Steve, it's Dave. Thank you for that. Like we had discussed previously, I just want to make sure that the superintendent and I specifically, as well as the whole board, understand this, as vague as it sometimes may be, because we do want to allow everyone to attend, you know, meetings. Here we are in person, whether it be a board member or for public participation. So, you know, it could be apparent that he has to come in for a conference. So I'll leave it at that. I just want to make sure that we are being legal and allowing as much access as possible to a public meeting. Questions first, Steve Seedor. Alan.
Steve, what about visitors to school buildings? Is there, like, what's the law say about that?
Steve, Alan is asking your opinion of the law on visitors to school buildings.
At what time?
During the day, Alan, or after hours?
During the day.
During the day. So when schools are, when kids are present during the daytime.
Okay. So when kids are present during the day, the Adapt, Advance, and Achieve specifically says that it's advised that there's universal indoor mask wearing for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to pre-K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. It then invokes and references the DPH's order and Executive Order 13A. And so that's where we again get back into the conflicting, or at least confusing, standards by which we're talking about. Are we saying that the exemption under 13A about medical exemptions applies? Or are we saying the DPH's, the DOE's guidance that we're talking about here of the higher standard applies? In my opinion, if it's taking place during the day and there is a visitor, the higher standard of showing the need for an exemption that is set forth in the Adapt, Advance, and Achieve would apply. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Steve. And just so everybody knows, we did ask Dr. Dynan, am I saying that pronuncially, to call in, but he couldn't, our medical advisor, he couldn't be available tonight. We did ask him. Nick.
Was the Director of Health asked to come and move Dr. Dynan?
No, we didn't. We didn't think of that, honestly, Nick. Yeah.
Well, to start, I think it's really unfortunate that we don't have a medical voice in this I think that that's really important, which is a medical issue and a legal issue, but also a medical issue. My first question for the attorney is, can the board go beyond the executive order? And I'll put a little context around that. When the state passes a law, local governments can be more restrictive than state laws that are passed. We can't be less restrictive. Can we do that in this instance?
Steve, Nick is asking the question, is if the board can be more restrictive, more strict than the executive order?
Possibly, but it can't do so in a way that would prevent somebody who would have a legitimate medical exemption from attending, because in doing so, that would raise the argument that they are discriminating against an individual with a disability.
Okay. So a follow-up to that question is, if we allow people to participate fully in a remote setting when people are present in person, and we give everybody the ability to participate without changing the ability to participate, would that be allowed?
So I'm going to paraphrase and-
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, Nick, Steve, so Nick is asking, like, a hybrid model, Nick?
Yes.
So Steve, what if we went to, right now, we are all in person. We're not using Zoom or a hybrid model. What if we went to a hybrid model and allowed people to participate via Zoom? Would that be okay? But then, I guess the question-
You can't tell them not to come.
Nick, is, are we going to tell anyone, or can we tell anyone that they have to participate in that way?
Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay. So in my opinion, it's a two-step process. You get to, you only get to saying you may only participate in a hybrid process after you've made the decision as to whether or not the exemption under which they are applying qualifies them to attend in person. So if you say you don't have a valid exemption, then the reasonable accommodation would be to have them attend in a hybrid fashion. But you don't get there until you've said, no, you don't qualify for the exemption. And then the person says, I still want to attend, and then you say, well, then you have to attend hybridly, if that's the word. But if they are entitled to the exemption, they are entitled to attend, and in my opinion, you can't make them attend via remote access, not if they are entitled to the exemption.
Nick, are you set? I want to make sure you're-
For now.
Alan.
Steve, you mentioned legitimate medical exemption. What is a legitimate medical reason?
I guess what I, that was probably a poor choice of words. I should have probably said, "An exemption that meets the standard of either the executive order or the Adapt, Advance, and Achieve." And just so that I'm clear, I just spoke about what the Adapt, Adapt, and Achieve is. The executive order states, "Nothing in this order shall require the use of a mask or cloth face covering by anyone for whom doing so would be contrary to his or her health or safety because of a medical condition, behavioral condition, or disability, or anyone under the age of 12, any person who declines to wear a mask or face covering because of a medical condition, et cetera, may do so, but only if such person provides written documentation that the person is qualified for the exemption from a licensed or certified medical provider, psychologist, marriage or family therapist, professional counselor, social worker, or behavioral analyst, the Department of Developmental Services, or other state agency." So when I said legitimate exemption, that was a poor choice of words. I should have said, "An exemption that meets the standards of the executive order," or when school is in session and students are present, the Adapt, Advance, and Achieve. Did I get, did I answer that okay, Alan?
Yeah. So if I'm understanding correctly, a licensed clinical social worker can write a mask exemption?
Steve, can a licensed clinical social worker write a medical exemption? Is the next follow-up question from Alan.
Licensed, so it says, "A licensed or certified medical provider, psychologist, marriage and family therapist, professional counselor, social worker, or behavioral analyst." That's the list. It's a very broad list. So what is the particular provider that Alan asked about?
So social worker, a family therapist.
Family therapist, social worker.
So, yes, so an LCSW.
So licensed or certified medical provider is very broad. I would probably say yes.
So even though they're not qualified-
Now, it's got to be applicable to the condition that is being applied for. You know, you can't have, in my opinion, you can't have a podiatrist saying, this person qualifies for the medical exemption. You can't have a chiropractor, in my opinion, saying, this person can't wear a mask. You can't have somebody outside of the realm of qualifications to provide that opinion giving it unless there is some basis for them to say it. That's my opinion, and that's the common sense that I'm trying to apply to this executive order. You know, I mean, you got to have common sense here at times. So I think it'd be reasonable to say, you know, the person who provides the opinion has to be somewhat qualified in the area upon which they are speaking to give it. Because, like I said, otherwise, you know, you could be saying, you know, I specialize in cuticle therapy, and I think that John Smith needs to wear a mask. There's a common sense element that I think you can reasonably apply to it.
Jerry?
Hey, Steve. So let me see if I get this right.
Hey, Jerry.
So if there are, if there's students involved, then there is a more critical vetting of the medical letter. So we have three student reps at every meeting. So because it's only three, it doesn't qualify under that, according to you?
No, no. That's, thanks for that question, Jerry. I'm saying that that's where the line is drawn in the middle that creates the gray area, and I'm saying you've got the two competing standards, and I'm not sure which would apply. I think that the more students you have present, the more the Adapt, Advance, and Achieve would apply. The less students that you have, the lesser standard would apply. Or possibly even, the plain language of the executive order would just apply, and the lesser standard would apply. I'm saying it's not exactly clear when there are students present, but it's not the typical school setting.
Okay, fair enough.
I wish I could be more, Jerry, I wish I could be more definitive than that for you. I really wish I could.
No, Steve, Steve, that's fine.
It's just, like I said, it's unprecedented times. We're dealing with three different documents that set the rules on this, and no court or agencies ever done it. So it's basically my opinion based on how I interpret them.
So I know that your firm represents a lot of school systems. What's happening around the state with this, Steve?
So around the state, what I would say is this, is, in my opinion, most districts have not squarely had the conversation that you guys are having. Most districts are doing, at least from my observations, one of two things. They are just unilaterally having everybody wear masks and following the Adapt, Adapt, and Achieve, if not explicitly, implicitly, because they're having everybody wear masks, or they are districts where nobody shows up to the board meetings, and it's outside of school hours where no school students are present, and they're a little loose with the mask wearing. But nobody that I represent, and from what I know of the other districts we do represent, I don't think anyone has squarely had the conversation that you guys are having.
Thank you, Steve.
Shannon.
So there's conflicting, different degrees of standards in the documents from the governor, but all two or three of them still give rights to the individual with the medical exemption. It doesn't take away, none of those documents take away the rights of the individual with the medical exemption. Is that correct?
You're correct, but I want to make sure that I phrase what you said correctly. They're not conflicting documents from the governor. The governor issued the executive order. The Department of Public Health issued one set of implementing orders, and then the Adapt, Advance, and Achieve came from the State Department of Education. So when I talked about what I viewed to be conflicting guidance, they're not from the governor. They are from different administrative agencies.
Oh, health, health agencies?
Your question is correct. None of them take away a medical exemption from anyone in any situation.
So without the, without our ability to have the health professional on the phone, we still have the documents from the state health professional? And what they are saying clearly is they are not taking away the rights of the individual with the medical exemption?
You are correct.
It's how they scrutinize the medical exemption, Steve.
I wasn't done. People might not like the rules. You know, people have to, you know, concede elections and things like that when they wanted to win and they didn't. And people might not always like the rules or the laws, but they exist, and they do protect the rights of the people with the medical exemption, and people will have to accept that, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Dennis, and then Jerry.
Steve, you don't know me. I'm Dennis Condon. I'm newly-
Dennis, how do you do?
Good, nice to meet you. I've been in healthcare for 38 years, and this is an dilemma that everybody's facing right now, all right? Clearly, setting the bar at COPD is a high bar, as the only example, but clearly, being the vagueness of that order and saying that, you know, you have a respiratory problem, you have asthma, you can basically have a physician of any ilk basically sign off on a medical exemption, and the highest bar for this group to do is to accept a medical exemption for those people coming into the school. That's the safest course of action for this board to do for our students, our teachers, and our staff. Is that not your statement?
Can you give that to me again? I lost you along the way. I'm sorry.
The highest bar we can go for is asking for a medical exemption, right? Whomever's coming in who doesn't want to wear a mask, show that they have a medical exemption. Or being on the board, show them that they have a medical exemption. Does that cover all bases to cover our students and our faculty and everybody here?
Well, when there's students, yeah, when there's students present, one of the medical exemptions is going to have to apply. And so it's either going to be the exemption that says, a note that does not require you to identify the condition applies, or the higher standard in the Adapt, Advance, and Achieve applies. If there's no students present whatsoever, the argument can be made under the executive order and the DPH's implementing guidance that no masks are required. The issue really more comes down to when students are present. The issue really more comes down to when students are present.
Thank you.
Jerry?
No, I, I'm, I'm, yeah, Steve, you just answered what I was gonna add, but the thing that, that we're forgetting, and forget who won and lost elections, Shannon, that wasn't a good shot, forget about that. There's kids involved, and that's what I think we're missing. We're missing the fact that there's kids involved here, and I know that's part of the order, and when there's kids involved, you've gotta scrutinize that medical exemption a little bit more than if there weren't students involved.
Sorry.
I wasn't talking about this election, Jerry, I wasn't even talking about local elections, I was using it as a metaphor for, you don't always like the rules or the laws, but they all, but they still apply, that was my metaphor.
Okay, I, I, I apologize.
So everyone, if we can just dial in just one, one, one second. We have medical exemptions, we've had them come in, we have them present, we've obviously rearranged a little bit, I'm trying to have everyone be comfortable, and I'm trying to allow full access to a public meeting. So our only other choice here is to move our venue to another town building, and then this whole point is moot, correct, Steve?
Yes.
But that is up to all nine of us, it's not up to me. Yes, Nick?
Um, I just have a quick question, like procedurally about this discussion. Are we gonna do questions to the attorney and then have a discussion amongst ourselves, or are we just discussing generally now?
We're discussing generally now, we can let Steve go, but I think if we're gonna make a motion, I think we need to have it vetted by our board attorney if we're gonna make a, you know, a decision concerning, uh, to allow or not allow masks. I just wanna make sure that what we're doing is, is, is legal.
Well, I had a couple motions prepared, um, based on the way the conversation is going. I don't think that they are, uh, I don't think they would be in order based on, uh, the governor's, the governor's orders. I think a solution to this problem is that we move to Zoom. That does not deny anybody access, it doesn't deny access to the public, it doesn't deny them the access to participate in our meetings fully, we did it for a year. I'll tell you, you just asked if we're comfortable, I'm not comfortable sitting here. I wasn't comfortable sitting here at the last meeting when we had a board member sitting without a mask on, and there was no statement made, there was nothing said, so I'm not comfortable here. I would be comfortable on Zoom, participating as we did, and I think that that would comply with, um, it wouldn't be an accommodation, it would be, it would be, everyone would be participating equally, us and the public.
Steve, can I respond?
Yes, Justin.
Nick, you can go remote whenever you want. I went remote for the first two meetings while we were sorting this out, so nobody's stopping you from going remote. I don't think that everybody needs to conform to a remote meeting 'cause you're uncomfortable. I think you can go remote, and people can still attend a person who feel comfortable.
I wanna go back to Dennis.
I just had a comment while Steve's still on the line. Jerry had mentioned more scrutiny of the medical, but the medical is purposely vague, if you listen to what Steve said, it's like, you're not gonna be able to get.
I'm using his words, though, Dennis, I'm using Steve's words, I didn't create, he said that when students are involved, you scrutinize the medical form more.
Right, but you can't get into any details of what are you scrutinizing? The ink?
I understand. I was just using my lawyer's words.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's purposely vague, right?
Yeah, the or, the governor's order says that they don't have to release the condition, it's private medical information.
Correct.
So.
Well, if they say it's private medical, uh, uh, condition, what it specifically says is that the, um, uh, the documentation shall not be required to name or describe the condition that qualifies the person for the exemption, whereas during the school day when students are present, it specifically says that the, um, uh, exemptions, uh, are quote, "rare." So. Now, you can argue that just applies during the school day, uh, you, you know, it's, uh, whereas, you know, I keep getting back to, as there's less and less students, uh, and as there are more and more students, you see those standards sort of inter, intermingle, and that's the grappling issue.
Do, do we know if Town Hall is set up to, uh, for Zoom capabilities? If we went to Town Hall and went hybrid?
So your reason to go to Town Hall is because the Town Council Chambers is masked for it? That's your reason for going?
Unless Ken changes, um, changes that order. Well, we, we wouldn't have, the, the executive order wouldn't apply, so you can wear a mask if you want, or you can not wear a mask if you don't want to, or, as Nick suggested, we can go all Zoom.
Well, I, and I think that's, and Justin, I, I do agree with you, but I think what I felt bad with Justin was, he was Zooming on the phone. I think what Nick's asking for is, put back up to Zoom. We, we were Zooming online. Right, Nick, am I saying that right? And Justin, you're right, you're right, I'm not taking that away from you, but I, I was hearing you on the phone, and I rather would have, have seen, I don't know if that makes sense, but I think that's what, you're, am I saying that right? Just bring up to Zoom again.
Look, I, I, Jerry, I'm, I'm all for the capability of doing either, but I don't think that we should sacrifice the folks that wanna be in person for being in person, right? I mean, if we have the technology, those who wanna Zoom, I think we should provide the capability of doing that, but we shouldn't tell everybody they have to Zoom just because.
No, you're right, Justin, I just, I just wanted to get the Zoom out there, that's all, I, I, I agree. I just don't think the phone worked as well as when we Zoomed.
What's, uh, what's everyone's feelings on it? You wanna go, you wanna go to hybrid, is that what I'm hearing? Where those that wanna come here, we come here, we can stay spaced out like this, and, and we can Zoom, can we Zoom here, Joe?
I don't know, and Paul is not, Bob, Paul's not here, huh?
Right.
So we would have to find that out?
I don't know what the, the capabilities are to, uh.
Get screenshots here.
To be able to see the other person, to see the other person, we're gonna have to ask Paul.
They could, they could definitely call in if they're not comfortable, but we're not sure if they could Zoom in.
Yeah, and I, and I understand the difference, it's definitely.
There's a picture, you can see my face, and you can see my anger when I Zoom, but you can't see it when I'm on the phone.
No, we can't, you still have your mask on.
Not if I'm Zoom, not if I'm Zoom.
Dennis, go ahead.
Question, I mean, speaking from a Town Hall standpoint, they Zoom all the time, right? But you can't stop the overtalk. I don't know whether you, when you were Zooming here.
I'm gonna have the button.
You can cut people up?
Yeah, yes.
That's a function that's not currently available, that I've seen witnessed, at least at Town Hall, just so you know.
You can't, can you stream at Town Hall our meetings, or no?
I don't think so.
Correct. Right now, we, we have on television, so we lose that capability.
We have a precedent set with that, we've been live every meeting.
So I would be opposed to moving it to Town Hall because we have the ability to film or to stream our.
Here.
Here, for the public.
Can I, can I ask, Dee Dee, can I put you on the spot? Do you know the capabilities there, in Council Chambers?
The, um, chamber used to be totally needed, that was what it used, just now, two, three weeks of, of switch over to Zoom. I don't know whether you can stream there because we just record, we're not live unless we're on iTunes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on this? How about if I get some, uh, Jeff, go ahead.
Just a quick question, it's more for Joe. What is our policy currently for the students and staff in the building as, when it comes to masks and exemptions?
Well, should we let Steve Seedorf go, 'cause we're on the clock?
Anything, yeah, anymore for Steve? Dennis?
I think that question's very valid, because whatever we do here is gonna roll over.
That's right.
For Steve, is it for Steve, Jeff?
Well, I, I, I mean, in my opinion, I think we should adhere to whatever rules we're following in the schools during the day, and if those rules encompass an exemption, then that's what we should adhere to. If it, if it does not, then.
Zooming hybrid classes? Yeah, really, that's the point.
So.
There, there are students with exemptions.
So do I.
Can't, can't go too much beyond that, but there are.
No, I'm not asking for how many, I'm not asking for who, I, I just.
No, but they're coming to class with their exemption.
My point is they're in the building.
They're not being Zoomed.
Correct.
With other students, right?
So you're asking, what, what's the process?
What, exactly.
So, and I think this goes to the idea of, you know, how their, how the letters, how the medical exemptions are scrutinized. So they have, if they have a letter saying that they have an exemption, we ask the doctors to fill out another, another sheet of papers that explains what the medical contraindications that they reference in the adapt, advance, achieve are, the COPD, severe emphysema, all that, um, and we ask them to attest that the student has a, a condition that, they don't have to, they don't have to name the condition, but we're asking the doctors to attest that they have a condition that's so significant that they can't wear a mask, and they, they have to attest on that, on that sheet. And then we ask if there are any accommodations that they could have, um, besides just an exemption, and, again, that, and so that's, that's, we ask them, we, we give them the parameters of adapt, advance, achieve, that, that higher bar, and ask them to attest that there is a, uh, you know, an impairment that would, uh, qualify. But to date, are any of those students with exemptions being hybrided from home? No. They're not Zooming in? No. Just wanna make sure we're not setting a precedent that we can't live by. We do not have any asynchronous teaching in the district. Thank you. Or, uh, I'm sorry, hybrid teaching in the district right now.
Joe, so a ballpark, how, how many are we talking about, Joe, in the whole school system?
Uh, less than five.
That's all I wanted to know, okay. Thank you. Out of 3,000, 300 kids? Yep? Okay.
So that's the precedent for students and teachers? Couldn't we, just along the lines of what Jeff was saying, why don't we just apply that to?
Everybody else?
Yeah. If you have a legitimate medical reason, your doctor will justify it on that form, and we move on.
The kids sit in the classroom with the kids with no masks, there's no issues, correct?
I think we've heard Steve clearly state the difference, right? When there's a lot of children in the school, there's a different criteria than there is when they're not, when they're not present.
No, I'm just saying, I hear you, Justin, I'm just saying that, um, we just apply the same standard, the same, same scrutiny.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
The, the, it's very clear that we don't have to, based on the two different criteria. If there's students, if there's a lot of students present, there's a higher criteria. When there's not a lot of students present, AKA BOE meeting like this, then, you know, we don't, we, you don't need that level of scrutiny.
What if we looked into the IT capabilities to remain here so we can still, um, stream and record? And, uh, Joe will check with Paul about Zoom, and I will get back to everybody, uh, before the next meeting. Dennis?
One exception that, not that I don't wanna see your faces, but Zooming, these guys from another room might be the answer, right? You have the students in another room Zooming to our meeting, it's limited, it's here, it's one function, you're not opening it up for everything, anybody else who wants to come in, speak, has an exemption, doesn't come in.
But I think you're, agreed, but.
That's hybrid, yeah.
If somebody's not comfortable with that, a parent saying, somebody without a mask, I still think we need to offer Zoom, Dennis, to anybody who wants it.
Right, but be careful what we're, we're saying, in my mind. If you're opening it up before, even if it's five, five, 10, 50, it doesn't matter, if you're not offering the same services that you're offering to the board.
Agreed, I just wanna.
You're gonna open up a can of worms.
I just wanna offer Zoom to those who want, if I wanna Zoom, or if, if John Smith feels uncomfortable, I wanna, I want that offered, it's not offered anymore. I can't Zoom this right now.
Right.
I want that offered for somebody, that's, if, if we're gonna take into consideration someone's feelings, we need to look at the other person's feeling, that's what it's all about. So I just think we really need to look at the Zoom.
Our other board of ed meetings in the state Zoom, or is everybody in person?
Do you know?
Uh, I, I think you'll find there's a mixture.
Right.
Yeah.
But all schools are in person, so that's not setting a precedent for the meetings.
Right.
Is what I'm saying.
Yes, you're right, that's how I feel, it's not setting a precedent.
But that's what I'm just saying, like, there's no, it's not like, obvi, the, the state mandate is, there's no online learning, it's all in person, correct?
Yes.
But the meetings have no govern, we could do what we want. It doesn't have to be tied to each other. So if you wanna do Zoom, I don't think there's an issue if people feel uncomfortable. If you wanna come to the meeting, come to the meeting.
And you're limiting your Zoom expenses to public participation.
Nick, go ahead, and then I'd like to, I'd like to move forward, 'cause we have people waiting to.
No, I was just gonna say to Christine's point, that the meeting, the public meeting is, she's right, that it's a separate executive order that governs the ability to have remote meetings relative to having, like, remote learning. They're different, they're different things, because a school is not, I know it's a public building, but it's not a public building like a Town Hall is compared to a public meeting like this.
Access, right. All right, so I will, I will look into that technology issue, Joe will with IT, and I will get back to everybody, uh, prior to the next meeting, okay? Joe, uh, Will with IT. Thank you.
Shoot, I've opened the link, I'm on the agenda, I'm sorry, Nick, open the link.
Um, all right, Steve, we're gonna end the discussion, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, guys, thank you very much for having me, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Nope, okay. Uh, next up is, uh, public participation. Is anyone here for public participation? Do we have anyone signed up?
There's nobody signed up.
No one signed up? Yes, sir. Can you just, just from right there, state your name and address?
I'm, uh, John Distalel, 207, Barn Hill Road. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Whatever the rules are, it's right that we should understand them and talk about them, make sure we get everything right, but I think we should be, at the same time, pushing back against these rules. And I'll tell you my experience. I'm a heavy equipment operator, crane operator. At one time, I can't remember the exact times, 14 years I maintained qualifications in working hazardous atmosphere. So, that involves going to school, getting qualified, going back every year to re-qualify. I've worked on two super fund sites, spent hundreds and hundreds of days under full protection. You have to do the job right, you have to do it right, you have to have the right protection. OSHA sets the health standards, NIOSH sets the equipment standards. So for 14 years, I go to these schools, different instructors, and every instructor takes out what we're wearing right now and tells you they're only good to wipe with. They think they're being cute, but they all, they all say basically the same thing. So if you want real protection, if you wanna do the job right, you have to get fitted. Well, we're just putting on a show here, all of us, you students, there's a whole bunch of adults talking about something that doesn't really work. I know because I've worn the stuff that had to save my life, and I know the difference. You have to get fitted, it's a big rigmarole, we're just putting on a show. So I think there should be some pushback, as long as there's rules, we have to follow the rules, we have to understand them, okay? Because you, you guys have tremendous responsibility, I understand that. But if we, I think there should be some pushback, because what we're doing doesn't really help. There's been a lot of data, depending on who you listen to, so take your choice.
Thank you.
In, no, I'm not done.
Yep.
I think the larger educational issue is that you can't fool these kids. They know that we're just putting on a show with these masks, they don't hear enough. The people that are making us wear these masks, they don't believe in it, 'cause you see what they do when they think nobody's watching. And the bigger educational principle here is showing up and just putting on a show. I still work, I still go to work every day, blue collar guy, and I'm seeing more and more of it. Don't have to show up, you just don't have to do it right, you just have to show up and put on a show. And you all are doing the right thing here, discussing all this, I'm not saying that, but whoever can push back and, and just let other people know that we know, that they know, that we know, that we're, we're just putting on a show.
Thank you, sir.
Whoever it is can do that, that's what I'd like to have, go.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public participation? Okay, we are gonna move on to the report of the chairman. Uh, I would like to, uh, acknowledge, uh, two donations. The board will acknowledge with gratitude two donations made by anonymous donors totaling $3,500 to be put towards the Communication Board Playground Initiative, and also, the board will acknowledge with gratitude a $500 donation made by the Board of Trustees of the Weller Foundation Incorporated. This donation has been made to the Massey High School Library. This donation has been made to the Massey High School Library for the purchase of books in honor of the Weller Foundation founder Barton L. Weller. Thank you very much for that. Next is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as in our? Jerry makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dennis, any objections? Nick?
Yeah, I just, in the minutes from the December sixth meeting, Dennis was listed as a co-liaison with me to the Board of Finance, happy to have him. Was that on purpose?
No, I am, I accepted it when it was asked, that's true.
For pension or for Board of Finance?
Board of Finance.
Oh, okay.
The one Thursday I missed.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
For finance, that way if you can't make it, we have to.
Yeah, I missed that, so that's great.
While we're mending agendas, I mean, minutes, there's a second change in the minutes?
Well, mine, no change for me.
Okay, thank you. Dennis, go ahead.
A change of minutes, Shannon was here for the second, the eighth. She came late, but she was here, Scotty was absent, just a clarification.
Okay. We will make those amendments, or Dennis's amendment? Any other, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda with that adjustment? Thank you very much, motion passes. Onto our reports of the committees. And we will go to our student representatives. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education. I hope everyone's having a great Monday. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate sophomore Eric Unger, who is chosen to be this year's Massey H O B Y winner. The Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminar is an opportunity for students to develop a global community of youth and volunteers to a life of dedicated to leadership, service, and innovation. And winter sports kicked off with big wins for boys and girls' basketball over Shelton on Saturday night. Boys' ice hockey and boys' swimming also opened their respective seasons with impressive wins as well. And girls' ice hockey is playing well, but opened the season with some tough losses. And students are looking forward to winter break, which starts off with a half day on Thursday and ends on January third, 2022.
Good evening. Senior Alyssa Klein had one of her photos selected to be included in the Drexel University High School Photography Contest. Alyssa's photo will be up, up on exhibit at Drexel's Photo Gallery in Philadelphia from January 29th to February 27th. In other news, this past weekend at the robotics event, there are 140 qualifying matches and two elimination brackets that saw over eighty robots compete. Massey teams had a lot of success and saw growth by all of their teams. For Mr. McDonough, one of the robotics teachers, the best part of the weekend was seeing our middle school team members support our high school teams on Saturday, and our high school team members running the middle school event on Sunday. And another piece of information, the Massey Free Press is releasing their holiday issue tomorrow.
The Massey Band held a successful concert last Tuesday, December fourteenth, and the Massey Orchestra held our concert last Thursday, December sixteenth, both of which went very well. On Thursday, December 23rd, Massey's Interact Club and the Connecticut Children's Foundation will be holding PJ Day for the kids. They're asking for $1 donations or more, and for us to wear our pajamas to help honor children who are battling cancer and wear their pajamas for days, weeks, or even longer while fighting cancer and other serious illnesses. All proceeds will go to support local children battling cancer. Thank you and happy holidays.
You too, thank you very much.
I just wanted to make sure that the students, thank you guys for staying extra long tonight, and you are free to go always, today and every day after you give your report. Don't feel like you have to stay, you got an early morning and a lot of homework, so thank you and great job.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any reports? Nick?
The Board of Finance met last Thursday, they organized themselves, and we will be discussing their action item later in the agenda.
Any other reports from committees? Okay, thank you. We shall go to the report of the superintendent, Joe.
Thanks. Ron, do you want to, oop, Ron's way back there. Ron, do you want to start us off with the review of the fund activity statement?
We know we are, Ron. Before I get into anything, does anyone have any questions? Any specific questions?
I just, I'm sorry, Dennis.
Go ahead.
I had a question on object code 753200, which, I'm sorry, I don't know the page number.
Two.
Page two, which is entitled Professional Education. It's very much over, and I was just wondering if you could address that.
It's 807.
So that's, yeah, so outside agencies? So that's sped.
That's sped?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't remember, is that usually, is that in our monthly sped chart that we get, that line?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, I don't, all right. I wouldn't talk about that in January. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Dennis, did you have a question?
Yeah, there are a couple. Actually, when you look through the list, at all the, all the ones that are over 100%, you know, obviously some are like minimal, and I'm assuming those are timing issues, not anything big. But you have some that are at 1,000% over, right? You know, 2,175. Now, speaking specifically for 757390, I believe it is, on page three. It's 20,000.
Okay, so yeah, that's.
Technology under.
Yeah.
It's just a new line?
It's, it's not a new line. It, it was related to some technology purchases here for the computers. He ended up, it was the teacher laptops at IT.
Okay, so that, it's a bundle purchase, basically. Okay.
And we'll be able to cover that with a budget transfer because there's a.
That was really it. There's a couple that are minimally over, but, you know, overall, it's balancing on nicely.
So I believe there was an equipment rental line. I, I don't, I, when Paul overspent the line, it was discussed with me. And we do have a, a transfer that we cover.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Any specific questions? I mean, overall, the budget's fine. Sped is, is, you know, tracking real well right now. The only point of concern in the upcoming months, and it's not a big, I don't expect it to create any issues overall with the budget, are the utilities. And we're not locked in on fuel or nat gas, so there's a little exposure there. Consortium we, previous we belong to kind of blew apart, and we're, you know, looking at.
So the propane increase that was on here, you're expecting to continue? Propane's not in the consortium?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a separate contract.
Okay.
And that's pretty much it.
Any other questions for Ron on budget items?
I mean, off, off the board budget, food service is doing fine, both Massey and the NSRT schools. No wish in there, we'll hear like last year.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Joe?
Next is the board member representation for the school calendar. As you remember, we use the regional calendar established by CES. Using that, the calendar committee sets the calendar for the upcoming school year. The calendar committee will be meeting virtually, it's led by Jack. Be meeting virtually January 12th at 4:00 to establish the school calendar for the 2223 school year. We always have a number of different stakeholders on this committee, usually parents and representatives from the various unions. And we also usually have two board members on the committee as well. The work is usually completed in, in one session. I believe Jerry and Alan were on it last time. Just looking for a couple more people, unless you guys wanted to do it again, or if anyone.
I think it's pretty exciting. I think I want to give someone else the opportunity.
I'm, I'm open for it still, but if somebody else wants, that's fine.
Is anyone else interested in assisting on this committee?
It's a light lift, it's usually one day and done. We have a number of different scenarios, and we kind of, you know, talk about moving a day here or there, but.
I'll only do it if Jerry zooms in, so I can see his reactions.
No, I'll make sure I show up at your driveway, Dennis, I'll bring you. Joe, you said January 4th?
January 12th.
12th.
At 4:00.
Gotcha.
So Jack will, Jack will send something out. Dennis?
I'll do it if you want to, Alan, I'll do it.
Okay, so Dennis and Jerry, thank you very much. Done.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Ann to come up. I did get a request to talk about some questions regarding social emotional wellness of students. During my executive summary of the proposed budget, I mentioned the increased needs to address the social and emotional wellness of our students. As Dave and I witnessed at the legislative breakfast a few weeks ago, Monroe is not alone in this. This is an issue that's being felt through the state and probably the nation. The issue is not solely isolated to schools, as many communities, including ours, have expressed frustration with the lack of services for our kids in the greatest need. Oftentimes, students who are struggling with significant social emotional issues are not being able to access appropriate services outside of school, which include inpatient or outpatient services. Many times, there's no beds for, for these kids to go to. Some kids are being sent to the hospital, only to sit, only to sit there for hours to be seen by an emergency room doctor, and ultimately sent back home and sent back to school without the proper support. It's definitely, it's a systemic problem. I know when we were at CES, I believe the legislators who joined us at that meeting are pretty acutely aware of, of the problem, you know, based on the conversations happening throughout all the communities. So like I said, some folks requested Ann come to talk and address some of this. I know Ann put together a couple of slides, I'll put that together, but I think it's more informal tonight as well, that if you have any questions for Ann, she definitely has her ear to the ground. I know she's reached out to the social worker, our school psychologist, our school counselor, so. Ann, let me pull you over here.
Thank you, thank you, Joe.
Just let me know, Ann, I'll just, I'll hit it very soon, huh?
Yeah.
There it is.
Okay, great. Thank you, Joe. Already, thank you so much for having me here this evening. You know, I know Joe gave you a lot of information, the Passport of Education, about the high levels of care that we're seeing across the board in all of our kids in Monroe. And I think, you know, people are aware that we are having a mental health crisis in America. And, you know, there is ample newsworthy and also research done about the data in regard to this and why this is happening. We are dealing with it every day through social workers, school counselors, school psychologists. We are seeing these kids, and they are unraveling, and they need a lot of our support. These are just some articles, just some of them that I've come across that might be of interest to you. You know, I could share this with you at another time. So one of the most important things I wanted to get across is just the difference in mental health support staff we have pretty much in all school buildings across pretty much Connecticut. We have school psychologists, and school psychologists work predominantly with special education students. They do counseling, they do support, they work as a team, they do groups, and they do evaluations where, which are extensive. They are predominantly working with just special education students, and those are very busy people. They're extraordinarily busy, we always work together if we need any help with anything. But they pretty much are targeted for, for, for those folks. School counselors, we have all students, we also work with special education students, but we work with all students in the building, and that's across the board, K through 12. We are 504 case managers, 504s are, you know, under the umbrella of special education, and we are seeing a lot more students who have diagnoses that are 504, that are very attached to ED, very attached to anxiety, depression, and we are taking care of those kids as well. We facilitate developmental school counseling lessons, goal-setting, career interest inventories, coping strategy and testing, scheduling, academic, post-secondary planning meetings. We make sure that every student pretty much has a plan before they leave Monroe, Connecticut, before they leave Massey High School, and keeping up with each and every student and trying to make sure that they're, they're okay. One of the things that we do also is we refer. We refer our students who we always keep to us. We're always working together as a joint, as a team unit, but those kids that are severely at risk, who need above and beyond care, we refer to the social worker. And that's the position I really want to talk about today, because that is the area where we see the most significant severe growth in the needs of our students. Our school social worker, as we all know, is our, is a district. They're about 0.6, three times a week up at the high school, and then they're down at the middle school and also consulting and being available at the elementary school as well. But they are the ones that do the therapy with the at-risk students for suicidal, self-harm, challenging family systems. Go out to the homes of some of these students and families, substance abuse. We have, you know, gender identity issues moving through LGBTQ, we're supporting all students. Students can also self-refer to the social worker. Those are the people that talk with hospitals, talk with doctors. When kids are in IOPs, they try to get a plan, because these students who are hospitalized, they always return to us. And when they return to us, they're still in extremely fragile, fragile state, and they need support every step of the way to be successful and also take advantage of the academic offerings we have in Monroe School District. They are key components of our team. What we're seeing is there's such a more significant level of students who are unraveling and needing support. So we will always, you know, drop what we do. All, all administrators, all psychologists, school counselors, all of us as a school and community will always cater to whoever's at need and take care of a crisis situation. And to make sure all of our kids are okay. It takes a village, and every single one of them are very, very important to us. So what's happening is, some of the time that even as school counselors that we're supposed to be doing post-secondary planning with and going to Harvard and going to Yale and going to UConn and going to here and, oh, I want to make plans as a junior and want to. That time sometimes is being taken away in order for us to be taking care of the students that right now we're seeing is the highest I've seen since I've been here for 22 years. This is the most significant group of students that are struggling. And there's many reasons why, and we'll talk about that a little bit, too. I know Joe put this out too before, these are the levels of care that, and the red being the projected based on what we've been seeing lately. You know, just on Friday, I was working with teachers and counselors and we helped a student get to a hospital because of the despair and desolation that person was feeling. And, you know, people stayed above and beyond until four o'clock. And the hours of time it takes to take care of kids, I know some of you know this, is it's not a quick checkbox. It's a long, arduous getting the student okay, getting the family okay, talking to the family, making sure they know that there's support when they return, is hours and hours of time. And you have an incredible system here in Monroe. I speak highly of all of our counselors, all of our psychologists, all of our social workers. They're incredible people. Our educators are doing everything they can to make it okay for everybody. I don't know how that happens. This is also, Joe put this out as well for crisis intervention data. Last time, I believe you saw that. Once again, the projected based on what we're seeing now and how we're dealing with kids. This piece was from Jackie Hallow. This is the number of student appointments that counselors had with students in three months. That last bar of 700 that you see there, I think it's like an orangish brown bar, like those prior bar graphs are yearly. And that bar you see right in front of you is as of to, you know, not even as of today, as of November, I think, when these were happening. And so what are the students coming down to counselors and psychologists to talk about? First of all, the appointments are off the charts. These are some of the issues. Okay, in the high school, I don't know why it's jumping. It's very sensitive, Joe.
Sign the times.
That's a good thing though, right? So these are some of the issues that, you know, the students are talking about. This just gives you a little bit of that.
Spot in between these two.
It's the right spot. Let me go to the next one?
Yeah. And I know it's a long list and I guess it's important to know that, wow, they're coming down with a lot of concerns, a lot of issues. Things are really bothering them. They're breaking down in tears in front of us. There's childhood abuse, there's anxiety, there's oppression, there's grief. You know, we had a passing of a student just happen a couple of weeks ago. There's divorce that is contentious or not contentious that the kids are struggling with. Self-harming behavior, suicidal ideation, hopelessness, depression. It runs the gamut and it's happening and it's not just our school. It's, we are a microcosm of the world and the kids need our help. They need our support, they need our nurturance, they need our love, they need our guidance. And our goal is to find, to have school be that stable force for all of them. So then, and then connect them to communities outside of the school so that they can start healing and start building that center they need in order to be okay. It's a lot, it's a lot that's happening here.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm obviously a big list and I was trying to look at, it looks like you even have a line on there. So most common new issues, increased anxieties about health issues related to and unrelated to COVID.
You know, we, yeah.
Can you just delve into that a little bit more?
You know, we have been seeing a significant rise even prior to COVID of anxiety, depression. This is not completely the pandemic. Even prior to that, I think it was the year prior we got a social worker because it's been increasing significantly. COVID has just exacerbated all of these ailments in so many different ways. And there's a litany of reasons why, I'm sure, and there's a variable of all of them. And I do talk about that a little bit, a little bit later. Just the financial, emotional stressors in homes, the PTSD, the pandemic, social media is usually not our friend and, you know, these kids have been on their machines for two years. The ability to socialize was, has been stunted a little bit. And so it's been very difficult for them to just get back into the swing of things. It's good they're getting back into the swing of things, but now they have a lot to talk about. A lot happened over two years. Connecting kids to therapists is very difficult and that used to be something, first of all, the volumes of how many times we have to try to connect kids to therapists has increased significantly and people can't get a therapist to see them. So it's six months waiting lists and these are kids that come to us in despair and then have to get up the next morning and produce.
Ann, I just had a question. Like you were saying, you know, before the pandemic, we saw this significant rise. I remember Joe talking about before the pandemic hit superintendent meetings in Fairfield County where they were seeing an unusual amount of younger children experiencing behavioral crisis. You know, given that and given that whole list, like what are you doing proactively?
So, you know, we have, you know, in the high school, and I'll tell you, we have developed flex time, okay? So flex is something that's happening every day where we have meetings with students one-to-one. We have groups running with the social worker. We have groups running with counselors, with educators, bringing kids together so they'll socialize. There's also lots of discussion, there's mindfulness coloring, there's relaxation breathing, there's meditation, there's yoga, and kids can sign up with counselors during that timeframe. We would like to be more proactive. Right now, our model is moving and reactive because every moment of every day, students are coming down, you know, with issues. And in the mix of that, we're also taking care of a whole student body of students that are not necessarily in crisis, right? We're not talking about all students, you know, they are adolescents. So as far, you know, my experience, it says all adolescents need a little support and help and navigation, no matter what. So, you know, we're saying, you know, maybe 30% of kids are experiencing at significant levels. 70% of students are going with the program, following through with what they need to do, but they still need guidance and help and support through it, so.
What do you think's like limiting your team from being more proactive?
I think, you know, personally, we need more people. We need more people available to students. It's when you sit down with, across the table from a student and you're doing one-to-one therapy or help or support, there's really, has to be one-to-one sometimes. We, you know, one thing we don't even talk about, we have a whole interim room where we, and a para, you know, a para, not a mental health professional, she is the person of that room who is absolutely outstanding, does a fantastic job. We use her expertise in regulation of breath and anxiety for kids during the course of the day just to be okay. That's a whole separate entity of people there. We're not even talking about that group that we've already sort of worked with on a daily basis to be okay. And that's for kids to calm down during the day. If they get too worked up about something or something stressing them out, we have them go to a place to calm down. They do an assessment for us to see where they are. We are seeing students who are not coming to school, so we're running after them, get those kids back to school. What can we do differently to make it okay for them to be in school? We're trying to be flexible with all kinds of scheduling.
Are you like implementing any curriculum, like second steps or anything like that, like training all the teachers on this?
Not yet, no. Well, you know, what I'll say is the teachers, I mean, they went through a training on dealing with traumatic, you know, students in this day and what to be aware of, how to be aware of it. It went deep into how much trauma is really impacting the kids and how to keep kids emotionally safe in classrooms.
Ann, can you touch on the developmental guidance curriculum that address some of this, especially at the elementary level?
Yeah, so for elementary, they're, the elementary schools are, they have the school counseling developmental guidance program. So they go into classrooms and, you know, we have two full-time, we have two part-time elementary school counselors and one full-time counselor. And so they go into classrooms and they talk about all kinds of great things, friendships and I feel statements and how to have boundaries and coping mechanisms and the growth mindset and resiliency and speaking up and self-esteem issues and anger management and how to deal with the big emotions that are inside of you. So that's just par for the course that we do as school counselors across the board, K through 12. The struggle is the amount of students that need support from us right now, right here, drop everything and we need to take care of them. And that's what we're being faced with right now. And the kids are concerned. The news is, impacts them just as it impacts us as adults. It probably impacts them more as adolescents are impulsive, they're young, they're developing social, they're emotional. So school shootings do impact them. The world, climate change does impact it. It's, they think about these things. They think how it's going to impact them in the future. And those are things that kids are highly vigilant and alert about and trying to keep them in a calm state. We show up every day, educators, administrators, and keeping them okay and reassuring them of their safety has been truly, truly the most significant I've ever seen since I've been here. And we know, and all of you know, that kids will not learn really on high levels until we take care of these needs, you know.
Dennis, did you have a question?
I do have a question. You mentioned that, you know, these kids are rebounding, they're going to the hospital, getting thrown out quickly and coming back into schools. Have we done anything, I mean, this is a school-wide problem for every school in Fairfield County, but have we done anything to reach out to Hartford and Yale to see if we can get those personnel to come here and maybe have a rotation of their professionals to come in and help us with this because it's widespread and it's not going to stop. And when we look at your graphs, and I've been looking at them, when you see fourfold jumps from what current is or fivefold jumps, that's insane for predictive numbers, right? It's like, that's beyond troubling, right? So it's not just something that can be solved in the school. It's systemic for outside of school as well. All of us can look around and say we're stressed because of COVID and stressed because of other things. It's not something we can just cure ourselves. So the other professionals we could bring into this fold that can help us and get broader than what we have and give you the support you need. What?
I think that's a good idea. I don't, I haven't reached out to, we use Yale psychiatric, we bring kids to their psychiatric hospitals and to access, but we have not personally invited them in.
They both have schools, they got 11, 12 miles away from here. They may be able to rotate people in, social work-wise or whatever, to kind of help us out. If we attack, we go to the CEOs of both places and see what they can do because it's systemic. It's not just us, right? You need support and we need it now, so.
That is a good idea, actually, to really, with, you know, there's interns, social work interns in some of these school systems that need placements and things of that nature.
Nurses, the PAs, the social workers, all taking rotations. So it may be something to do.
And bringing a couple in, that's actually a very good idea that I could look into. I know down, Alyssa Kerr gets down in the elementary school, she's trying to get some interns to help her out, going to phone Hallow to deal with some of the kids down there.
Ann, just a quick follow-up. I think, you know, Alan was over the target a little bit in regards to the proactive piece of this. So, you know, we understand, looking at the projection, there's going to be a significant uptick. And I think from a budget perspective, right, we're looking, okay, how can we invest dollars into support, you know, that, you know, to get them the support they need? I'm looking at that and I'm seeing the downstream, more of a reactive strategy there where we're putting money in to support the downstream effect. I think it's important that we identify the root cause or causes, right? I know that this is obviously a very complex issue, but identify those core root causes and how do we influence those as either a board or just, you know, as educators in general, right? How we work together to hit the root cause? Because what I'm afraid of is that we're in that reactive stance where we're trying to support them downstream, but the projection is so alarming and we, you can't help but tie it to the impact COVID's had. I understand that some of these issues existed before, but COVID has clearly put that on a warp speed to where I don't, you don't have enough resources, I don't think we can fund enough resources to fully address what I'm seeing from a projection standpoint. What is the, what are the root causes and ultimately, how do we impact those? So I guess that's more of a question of, you know, have you identified what those root causes are and is there an opportunity for us to look at what that is, right? And how we can address those?
Well, at this point in time, like you said, it's complicated, it's variable. This is what we say generally speaking are some of the stressors on the kids. And some of them are just purely individual. Kids are physically abused, sexually abused, past childhood trauma, moving through their stuff as they move through the world. We're making people very aware of things as well, which always elicits more of a response of, because, you know, one in 10 people are traumatized on a high level. So, you know, kids in teenage years, they relive some of their past abuse on some level. And, you know, I, it's, what to do is our question. What can we do to be preventative, proactive? And we know we're talking about these problems a lot, a lot more. Sexual harassment, sexual abuse, not just ourselves, but in our health classes, which really brings everybody out to talk about their own personal things, which makes it more and more important that we have more people to receive the emotional pain and healing of our kids. I do believe we come out of this by having more people, more adults in this community, in the world, listening to children. I think as a community, we can do a lot. Have community meals together, share more generosity and love with each other. Kids can rebound and heal from this with support and love and attention. But the attention piece is paramount for them to heal. It's, I don't think we, we're still trying to figure it out personally as a whole school counseling group to say, how can we be, how can we be much more proactive when we're so reactive right now because kids are just calming down.
I think that's, excuse me, I think that's where, you know, Justin's coming from and correct me if I'm wrong, but there are certain commonalities we need to come to grips with, right? We force them out of the schools and they're on computers. And I don't know, who doesn't have a phone on them right now, right? Who doesn't live with this thing 24/7, right? Kids are not interactive right now with each other, they're playing off devices. So I think we have to grow into something that can feed to that, right? The human intervention is tough. Everybody's masked, you got isolation, you had social isolation, but is there something we can use technologically to get them engaged, to get them mellowed out, if you will, or more interactive that is attuned to what they're doing today? Have you looked at any of apps or things like that that we should probably be invoking to kind of help them out? And maybe the professionals at Yale or Hartford can kind of lead us down that road because we're fighting an uphill battle that's only going to get worse, right? We are device crazed and with these, it's tough to be social and you're making people distance themselves. It's hard to feel the love they. It's hard to feel the love that you're getting when it's, you know, one on 20 because you're not going to have enough people to cover their needs. So we got to think, we have to find a way to think different. You know, and I know, I respect what you do. My wife's a social worker. I mean, but you're fighting an uphill battle. When we're looking at charts like this, we'll never have enough money to do fivefold increases on, on projections for three months. You just won't, right? That's like one-on-one training and you're not going to have to, you can't. You know, so we have to list the professionals somehow to get involved in this and help us out in this endeavor because it is a community-wide issue. And I think we have to get everybody engaged. So I applaud what you're doing, but it's, it's going to be tough and obviously we're not alone, so.
What about a curriculum? Isn't there like some type of curriculum, social emotional curriculum in place? Cause I know the School Counselor Association, there's, isn't there something due? Some type of curriculum due by June?
For, you know, the social emotional curriculum we have is what we offer the kids K through E.
When was it written?
It's not the, it's ongoing, constantly changing. You know, the middle school and the elementary school counselors have an outstanding curriculum for SEL. They've changed a lot of their curriculum because of the amount of kids that are really stressed out and the depression and anxiety piece of it. So they are learning, teaching the kids coping strategies more so, how to deal with adversity, resiliency. So it's ongoing and it's ongoing change. They do a fantastic job. They're, they're, I think the more, it's more people to teach more lessons and also take care of these critical students who really need some extra, extra support at this point in time. And I don't think we're ever going to keep up with that level. But I think if you start at a, a basic level of support, you can definitely keep it in a place where it could become manageable after we live through this pandemic. You know, our, our counselors know our kids, but we had an incident, you know, two weeks ago where a student attempted and this person, it was not on anyone's radar screen, not even, even a little bit on somebody's radar screen. And, you know, I've been working with some of these people for 20 years and that was a shocker to this person. And it kept, it kept her up all night. Cause you don't know. There's something going on. I don't know what it is, but there's, and our goal is to make sure all children are okay, beyond everything else we're trying to do here. And when you go home and our counselors go home and they're like, I hope everyone's going to be okay today. That's not a good place to live. And you have to start somewhere. And yes, people make impacts on kids. Every educator, every person talks to a kid. All of you probably are parents. You know how important your role is in keeping them okay. Not everyone has that. We are those people. And the well-adjusted kids were, should continue to be well-adjusted and move forward. And we're going to help them. We need to take care of kids who are not as well. Because those kids are the kids that we need to make sure they're okay. And, you know, not to be alarmist, but when I do lots of reading on, on shootings and things like that, and it's not the well-adjusted children, you know, it's the kids that need the help and we must reach out to them. And we must make sure they're okay. And it does make a difference. And yes, a social worker does make a difference for anyone in the community. We have Debbie Kabachi, who's the principal at Monroe L., who retired. She comes to help us. She comes in, she relates with the kids. She's awesome at that, checking in, make sure everybody's okay. You need somebody today. So I hear that. We're never going to help everyone. But I do believe we can keep everyone safe and okay. And we have to, we have to put our, our energy and time into this.
So Anne, just a quick question, because again, I, I don't think there's a bigger issue, you know, as a board that we could take on. Right? Cause I think, again, looking at those projections, it's very alarming. And when we look at public policy driving some of this, some of the decisions that were made, you know, at the state level, federal level, whatever it is, you're looking at educational gaps within students, right? They missed out a year of school, so they're, they're behind the eight ball. The isolation, the addiction to technology, right? I, I don't know. Again, I, I think we, we need to address the, the root cause of the issue. What are, are, are those things still impacting the students? Because, you know, from a public policy standpoint, I don't think all that much has changed. I think we have screen and stay, right? So like from a quarantining perspective, maybe they're, they're not being quarantined as much. But I do believe that there's distractions in the classroom. I think there's, there's a relationship impact just because of differing viewpoints on certain things, right? There's definitely a divisiveness between some of the issues around COVID, et cetera. How do we address that? Cause I, to me, that, that, that's a concern. I do think that, you know, students come home from school and there's, there's different viewpoints on what's going on with the world. Some perspectives are completely different than the other. They're in school, they're being reminded, you know, between face coverings, et cetera, that there's something out there that's going to get them every day. How do we, how do we address that portion of it, right? To take some of that stress off? Cause I did notice on some of your charts, it had to do with, you know, things in, in the future, like fear of, of things happening in the future. There were some items on there in regards to that.
You know, I think we're all living in the same, same, same world. Kids aren't talking to us about masks. That's not, that's, it's an inconvenience for children. It's not a, something they have to do. I don't, it's never a conversation, but that's it. So.
Do you believe?
I'm not really sure, I'm not really sure.
Well, the mask is one piece of the COVID policy. I'm just talking in terms of public policy in general in regards to COVID. The detriment it had on kids, you know, just your perspective on that.
I mean, I think kids, for the most part, feel, generally speaking, safer with their masks. I feel kids have had parents or people die of COVID. I think that's real. And so their fear is real. It doesn't mean they live in there. And that's where, when we chat with kids, that we don't live in fear, we live in hope. We live in growth mindsets. But they, they're living through this. They're living through school shootings. They're living through COVID. We have to talk about it. So I don't, you know, I, I don't think public policy is the reason it's happening. I think it's, we must live this way to be safe. We're not just ourselves, we're other people. And I think kids, for the most part, get that. I might be missing what you're saying.
No, I, I.
Because I, I, I'm not really sure.
I think in terms of public policy, one of the things that's changed a lot this year from last year is getting, getting and keeping kids in school. I think there's a concerted effort this year. To me, the social isolation that, from public policy, you know, from last year, I think is, was really, was really difficult for our kids. School, for as much as they may say. It was amazing how fast we learned. The kids really liked coming to school.
Yeah, it was fun for like a week.
For years.
It was when.
When you took it away from them.
For like a week, maybe two. And then it just like.
When you took it, when we took it away from them in March 2020, they realized this is, this is, these are our community centers. These are our athletic, you know, venues. These are our performing arts venues. This is all, they lost all of that. And, you know, going back to quarantines and the hybrid learning and the remote instruction and kids being tethered to their devices, I think that was extremely difficult. So I think there's been a, a, a big shift in terms of trying to get and keep kids in school as much as possible this year. I think that's, that's important.
But you, I think you're breaking a lot of that. I mean, if anybody went Saturday and saw the robotics.
Yeah.
This place was packed. And those kids were having a blast, but they were running around. I mean, they were truly enjoying each other, all the different teams, and interacting some with, some without. I mean, make me crazy. But, you know, it's like, guys, you know, they were seeing what it could be. Sports was the same way. We took sports away, right? So you miss that interaction. You don't have that camaraderie anymore. And it's, it's showing its toll. So I think, you know, Justin's idea and yours of trying to get to a root cause. I mean, I came from a school system that had, you know, metal detectors at doors. Now, that can scare the heck out of kids or it can make them feel better. We got to figure out which it is, right? We are, can't deny it, six miles away from Sandy Up. Give it 10 years, it still has its impact. And these kids are living through all that, right? And you hear about it, it's like, what's the better thing to do? Is it better to spend money to equip it or is that going to make it worse? So I think we have to get more into the details of what, what's causing what's going to make it better as much as we can control. So, I applaud your efforts, but it's going to take a lot more, you know, people and diagnosis, if you will.
Nick, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to start with two positive things. I think, just anecdotally, I don't have data to back this up, but I think over the last couple of years, even pre-pandemic, that the stigma behind seeking help has been lessening. And I think that that is super helpful. And you might even have student, an influx of students because of some of that. So I think in the sense that, I think that part is good, that I understand that the amount of students that are coming might be overwhelming, but if students are seeking help, it's better than not seeking help. I also think that, you know, your comment about the list that you had about climate change anxieties, school shooting anxieties, LGBTQ anxieties, on top of divorces, on top of relationship issues, you know? Generation Z, that is 20, 24, 25, and the, the youngest members of Gen Z are in our kindergartens and first grades now. A lot of research is being done on them because they're coming of age now. And this is a generation that wants to do things. And they are the ones that, after a school shooting, are marching. And they're the ones who are actually taking on that they want to make climate change stop. But the problem with that is when you take on those adult things, you get those adult anxieties. And I think that if we're talking about root causes and, and things that, that kids are going through, you know, I'm thinking back to when I was in high school, 2005, 2006, 2007. I didn't watch CNN. I didn't, I didn't really watch the world news. And I thought at the time, I was someone that was somewhat clued in to what was going on. Kids are watching the news now. I mean, kids are, kids have, you know, CNN notifications on their phones and they want to do something about it. But they're taking on a lot of those things that they might not have felt later. And it's becoming part of their everyday life. And I think that's, that's a big problem. I also just want to make a brief, I know we're talking about students here. You know, the discussion, the comment was made about how teachers are being trained on trauma and working in trauma in the classroom. We can't forget that teachers are also going through their own trauma while they're trying to, 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 you know, help students. The whole conversation about, we had the conversation just two years ago before the pandemic about all these people that were graduating with teaching degrees and that the, the supply was higher than the demand. And that, you know, all these universities were pumping out MATs and there was no place for them to go. I think Dennis at the last meeting talked about, there was, there's a thousand physicians, or certified physicians open right now in Connecticut. The University of New Haven closed their education school because they didn't have enough people to go there. So people are resigning and it's, it's, it's the entire school atmosphere and, and, and it's the students and the teachers too. And I think there's two, I think there's two different things going on. It's not the same, it's not the same anxieties, obviously, for the adults and the students. But, and I understand the comments about, you know, there's, and I agree that we could, you know, raise taxes 50% and have all this money and you're not going to be able to, to.
Yeah, but it's a balancing effect in life, right? So we're not getting enough teachers out. At the same time, people who used to work in a hospital, go to hospital all the time, like, I don't want to do it anymore for COVID. I've had enough, right? So maybe there's some synergies where we can get people who don't want to go back in the big blocks, the big hospital because of COVID and the other relationship things that are happening. And maybe they can come out and work in a school. Maybe we can find a different avenue than working off the same resources that we've always gone to because that's what we knew to do. I think we have to find other ways to be able to meet this because it's not going to be met in traditional manner. It just can't. We can't keep using the same thinking. So we have to come up with something different. And we're not going to be able to do it alone. So I agree. You have not come enough teachers, not putting them out. Social workers, they, you know, now everybody has to have an MSW and plus, right? So there's a balance that we have to get. But maybe in there, there's a sweet spot that we can get people who want to help kids work in the school system, volunteer in the school system in certain cases. So you're not living off a, a power who hasn't been trained per se, doing this. Maybe there's other avenues that we can go to. Because there, it stresses out there and it's not going away. And everybody says, oh, it's going to be post-COVID. Get over the feeling. This is going to be continual, right? I'm sorry to say it, but it is. It's, this is the new norm. So we're going to have to find a way to deal with all the stresses, family stresses, kids' stresses, teacher's stresses, your stresses for dealing with it every day. I mean, when was the last, how many years ago, could you see PTSD up there? Are you kidding me? I mean, this is the new norm, right? So we have to adjust to it and we got to come up with a creative way to deal with it. Cause it's, it's going to be overwhelming. It is overwhelming.
While we're coming up with that creative way, it's also about like triage. It's also about, you know.
They need the resources to find the kids to fix them.
Yeah.
Right? But you also, you also see bright spots. And I'm going to get off tangent here, but you know, you have interact, right? I just heard all the wonderful things they're doing. It's 55 kids or so that are really being very active in the school. So you have clubs and things in the school that you can help push kids to socialize, right? Get a little back to interacting with kids to do things. And they're doing a lot of good things. But why don't we kind of, you know, invite, you know, push that phenomenon? You know, we have, you know, we have great sports teams across the board. They're great, right? Some had some rough beginnings now, but they're doing great. I mean, get people to interact more and, and I think we can get through this. But without that, you know, it's going to be rough. So thank you for your presentation, though.
Thank you.
There's a quick question. Anne, can you speak to how a student meets with a counselor, psychologist or social worker? And is it, I know you, that, that students have the ability to make their own appointments, but are there other ways that students are identified as in need? Just to help better educate myself on this.
So in, in the middle school, they do a survey and they actually put out to all the students, you know, what their needs are. Would you want a group in this or that? What are your stressors? So they actually do a survey of the students and based on the survey results, they make groups and identify kids through that. In seventh grade, I believe this year, they did a suicide assessment survey. They did a baseline to see, you know, where the kids are with everything. So you could be preventative. At the high school, the kids have, make, make appointments online. Lots of kids just come down and generally speaking, the kids come down, you know, if they need support, they're always available. They always can come down whenever they want to, if they need support. They don't need to have an appointment, but the counselor might not be available. But there's six of us, somebody will interact with that person and see what's going on for that person right then and there. You know, we meet, our counselors meet one-to-one. We have about a caseload of 200 kids. They go through their kids. They have small groups with the kids. They know ahead of time based on their interactions with them, whether they'll need check-ins more regularly or not. And like, I think the, the meetings with kids take quite some time when you're, when you're sitting with them. It's, it's not always check the box, do the graduation requirements, do a college search. Sometimes it's a long ordeal with what's going through with the, with the children, whether it's academic, whether it's, you know, emotional or things of that nature. So the counselor is always available, psychologist, social worker, you know. So the counselor is always available, psychologist, social worker, you know, Jess is going back and forth. You know, I do believe in a baseline of mental health. You'll never have enough people for anything, but you should have a skeletal system of basic mental health. And in Monroe, since I've been here, I really can honestly say, I don't believe we've even reached a skeletal system of, of mental health. I say that to say, because we have a part-time Stephanie Elementary School counselor, a part-time Monroe School Counselor. And we don't, and we have a, we don't have a social worker at the high school, which you don't hear of that. And I think you need to have a baseline, a skeletal system before you can say, this is not going to work. Because I do believe it works. It's, it's what can help Monroe become, I think, more engaged and help the students grow on that level. I, and, you know, I told Joe that too. I was like, Joe, you know how I feel about it. I just really feel like we're always scrapping with mental health in Monroe. And I don't know why. I, I think, you know, you just put the basic people in place. Let's just get basic people in place. Full-time social worker, full-time social worker here. Let's get full-time, full-time. And then, let's talk about the problems. We're just, we're on a deficit trying to get to the plateau. And that's, that's sort of how I feel, just assessing the situations.
Along, along those, that way, in the budget, and I can't find it right now, but there's, the spokesperson who came out of Sandy Hook, Ian something, that you have a budget for.
Ian Hockley.
Yeah, can you talk about that a little bit, what his program is?
I could talk a little bit about his program. That's the Sandy Hook Promise. You know, we use the Say Something app via the Sandy Hook Promise.
Ian Hockley.
Yes, the wingman.
The wingman program, separate from Sandy Hook Promise. I don't know, Steve, you might be, I know you met with Dylan Pinto.
So the wingman program is used to train the high school team leaders. And really then, that would be something that would help sustain because then they would go and they would meet with younger kids. So they, they, they kind of get that sense of connection between each other as they're going through the training and the team building. But then they foster that with the younger kids by working in the middle school.
So, I mean, that, that looks like a good avenue to address these items, so.
It's not going to address all the items.
Not all, no.
Might address a few, but a lot of what we're seeing is coming from the elementary school level. Like I said, it was surging before the pandemic. Now it's, but, you know, kind of based off of what Dennis was talking about in terms of resources, what about, what's it called, DESA? Did you apply for that?
No.
Because I know that was free, you just had to apply for it. It's like a social emotional rating scale, like K through 12. Did you ever hear of it?
Vaguely.
And you can kind of use it to gauge where students are at.
Yep. I have heard of that a little bit, Alan. I don't believe we're using DESA at the elementary school. I'll have to ask Silvissa about that.
Yeah, I think the. Okay. Because I know it was just something you had to apply for. It was kind of out there and you get it for free.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yep, okay.
What does DESA do, Alan?
It's a questionnaire. It, it kind of like gauges where students are at, like socially, emotionally.
Is it a baseline?
Yeah, it'll give you like a red flag.
At the elementary level?
Yeah, it actually, I believe it's K through 12. And it kind of tells you where the students are at emotionally. So in case you want to red flag kids, especially in the elementary school, that's where you want to, you know, catch them early.
Especially with the enrollment that we're seeing too.
Yeah.
Jeff, do you have anything else? Are you set?
Good.
Okay. Anything else? No? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks.
Joe, are you set?
That's it, yep.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Ann. Moving on, number eight to old business. Superintendent's 22 to 23 proposed budget. I'd like to start off with some comments. I believe at past meetings, we've discussed the funding of the staff that we had hired this year because of enrollment and whether or not to ask Board of Finance for special appropriation or how we were going to handle that, if we were going to continue to use grant money, which we, we would have to do either way. So we have that to discuss. To my knowledge, a formal request has not yet been sent to Board of Finance by us. So we need to talk about that a little bit. And also, we have, we have a full agenda. We have some more items to get through this evening. So what I'm asking the board is, we have a light agenda for our meeting on January 3rd. Do we want to save?
Fourth.
I'm sorry, it's the fourth?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Oh, that's right, okay.
It's very light on the third.
So, so for the fourth, we have a light agenda. Do we want to have the bulk of our budget discussion there? And Joe and I will hold the agenda, you know, for that so that we can really dive in and dig in on that day. Does that sound okay to everybody? Nick?
We're, we're voting at the next one, though, right? At the 18th?
Yes.
Yeah.
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 If we were to do a workshop.
Yeah, unless we want to add in a workshop too. It depends on how much we get done at our first meeting in January.
No, I was just checking, I was just making sure that the fourth wasn't the budget vote. That was just another discussion and we're going to vote.
Yeah, because we, I think we have to have it.
By, to 10, by 23rd?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so we can dive into the budget particulars next meeting. Is there any discussion on the funding and a request to Board of Finance? Nick?
Yeah. I think that we should, I personally believe that we should 100% be sending a letter requesting that these operational expenditures be covered in the current year. They're already appropriately in, correct me if I'm wrong, they're already appropriately in the budget, the operating budget for the budget that we're doing. But they're not covered for this year, and I think that they should be. They're operating expenditures, they're not grant expenditures.
Agreed. Other discussion?
Say that again, Nick, explain that again? You're saying?
The, excuse me, the, actually, Ron gave us a number. The number is 799-527. So those are the salaries for the staff that was hired using ESAR funding. Kindergarten teachers, the behavioral techs are in there. There's a couple other classroom teachers. But those positions are anticipated to be continual. The kindergarten teacher who's here this year is going to be here next year, or first grade, or wherever it goes. And so, grant-funded positions are usually for a fixed amount of time. But they're not, these are not grant-funded positions. These are operational expenditures. And operational expenditure should be covered by the Board of Finance, by, by taxpayer dollars. Grant funding shouldn't supplant the taxpayer obligation. So, it's also inflating our, well, my opinion, it's also inflating our increase. Because if you take that money out, then the increase drops to 4.1 off of 5.4, which is more, I think it's more appropriate accounting-wise also.
Well, the void's a cliff. If you continue to expense it, right? But you have to have enough money in your budget to have done that in the first place. Right? And I think that's the cost as we're at. We spent $799, $1,000 that we didn't physically have, right, not for any budget.
Well, right, right and wrong. We gave, Nick, I'm sorry to cut, cut you off. We gave back $2 million. We were going to invoke 1048A, but 1048A changed. Am I saying this right?
10-248.
10-248, and it changed. So we handed the town back $2 million of our money, our money, the Board of Ed money, to the town. And we're asking that they pay for the operational expense of the teachers out of that money we gave back. Am I saying that right, Nick? Does that sound?
Is that right, Ben? Is that what happened? Sort of. More or less.
Yeah. That's what happened, yeah.
And I think that the superintendent was, when we discussed this publicly before, the superintendent was in a, between a rock and a hard place because August 12th, he needed another teacher. So he went to ESAR because that was, was what was available to him. But he has a list of nine different things that he showed the Board of Finance that he'd like to start that includes some of, some programming about what we were discussing, that we can't start until we get a commitment from them that they're going to fund this because we have to pay the salaries.
Okay, so wouldn't that be the conversation we have on the fourth? Isn't that all part of what we discuss?
No, I think with Dave, you were just asking for permission to write the Board of Finance a letter, right?
Yeah, but he changed that. Write them a letter is different than tell them to move money.
Well, we can't tell them to do anything.
We can't, Dennis, so, so the surplus money.
Right.
Ron, it's law. Right, it has to go back to the town.
Right.
We can't say that we're going to keep it.
Right.
That's taxpayer money, so that has to go back to the town. It's sitting in the general fund. And we can ask the Board of Finance to apply that to this line item or this budget. I think that it needs to be part of our bigger discussion because, and perhaps talk about it on the fourth. The Board of Finance isn't meeting, Nick, until the 20th. So.
12th, right.
So, you know, we don't have to decide this tonight. I think we should make it part of our bigger discussion because if we're going to go to the well, how many times are we going to go to the well? And I think we have to be careful about, if we're going to ask the town for money now, and we're going to ask the town for money next year, or in two years when we hit that cliff, where, where's that ask going to be? And I, from what I understand, is that the First Selectmen and the Board of Finance, they understand the enrollment issues. They understand what's going on. They understand why our budget is high. We don't like a high budget. But they understand it, and they want to work with us to help us get everything funded. So, like I said, you know, in some quick discussions with the First Selectmen and Mike Manjos from Board of Finance, they want to work with us. And I think we should have some discussions with them about the fund money, the surplus money, the 10-248, so that we can pass a budget that we could confidently get to referendum and not have cut two or three different times. If we work in a silo like we have in the years past, we're just passing on things that we don't know what's going to get reacted to. So, I, I, I just, I think we should have a conversation with the First Selectmen and the Board of Finance more officially and see where their ideas are and how we can work together to get this budget passed as whole as possible. Go ahead, Nick.
I just, the budget book is good for these positions.
They're in operating for, yes.
Right. The, the question is, is it going to be covered in the year that we're in right now, the current fiscal year?
Correct, that's two totally different things, you're right.
So.
Right. Because there are, you know, I've had discussions with all of you about, our number is high. So how do we maintain the staffing this year, the staffing next year? And possibly use some of those funds or use some of the grant money, all the grant money, half of the grant money, a third of the grant money? How do we work together with the First Selectmen and the Board of Finance to ease the burden on the taxpayers? But at the same time, we all see the needs and not have to cut staff.
Not a bad, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Not a bad approach, but I think we should have our conversation first on the fourth, going through all the budget items we have. So we could put it in perspective of, here's what we're asking for going forward. Here's where we are now. And then you go with one ask to the town regardless of this is what we need. And then you do what you do. And come up with, okay, here's what the impact of the town's going to be. We're going twice, it's kind of, it's, it's kind of premature because we may be asking for more current, not using the ESAR funds for other things other than staffing, right? So it may be not 799, maybe it's what we're asking for now. Until we go through everything that we have laid out for us already and the sheets that you, the questions that you sent back to us saying, here's the questions you've had, I don't know whether we have all those answers yet to be able to do that.
But again, the 799 is totally separate from the actual budget.
Exactly. Well, no, it's not, it, what you're saying is, it's not the projected budget, it's current budget. 799 is being paid, right, somehow. We're paying for it now. Your statement is you want to pay through the town, through the money we gave back, right?
Yep.
And that's not necessarily wrong. But I think we should put it in perspective with what we're asking for as well, so they can say, here's what you're trying to do because we know ESAR funds will be, well, we assume ESAR funds are going to be drying up in two years. Right? Although rumor has it, maybe a third, who knows? Right? So I think we need to put the whole package together and go at the one time with, here's what we have, here's what we need, here's what we're going to have, and here's what we need, so they can put it all together to come with, okay, here's the, here's the ask from the school's perspective, and here's the ask from the town's perspective, and put together what that overall rate increase potentially is going to be for the town. We're doing it in steps, I think it's going to be confusing.
That's, that's fine, because the Board of Finance isn't meeting until January 20th, so we can discuss it on January 4th. I just want to emphasize that timing is an issue because we really should have, and I've asked this in multiple board meetings, that we should have this, in my opinion, that we should have written this letter in September. Because ESAR funds were created to mitigate learning loss during COVID. And the superintendent hasn't been able to earmark those funds to programming that could do that until we had a commitment or actually a vote, so whatever the process is, town meeting, et cetera, that's a whole different discussion, to get those funds. So we haven't been mitigating learning loss upwards of $800,000 because we haven't done that since September. So, January 4th sounds great.
So, just so everyone's aware, to access the funds that we're giving back to the town would require special appropriations, which was required, an application to the First Selectmen, a vote by council, a vote by Board of Finance, and then a county.
So either way, it's several months off.
It's a, it's a process, yeah.
Right.
Well, it, it's a process, and we're also going through the process of a budget at the same time. So if, if the request had been made a long time ago, because I think the timing is bad for right now. So if we're going to, if we're going to do an ask, let's do an ask and let's do a package. So is everybody okay?
Shall we give a poll?
And the other thing too is. Dennis, what?
I was just confirming that we're okay with the poll.
I know there's been some questions to Ron, that's in our, in our, in our packets, the questions and answers. But I've also asked Ron and Joe to look at some different scenarios of what if the town paid for all of it this year? What if they didn't? How much grant money, you know, would we have left? What if we went into next year, you know, with a 50-50? What if we went with 100% grant? What if we did a third, a third, and a third? So Ron's going to run some numbers that at least we can speak with some knowledge of how do we use the, the grant funds to ease the burden and still have some programming? So there's a lot there that I think we have to digest. And then, and then we have, we have a conversation with them about it. There's going to be an ask. It's just, is it an hour later?
Right, and the other question is, okay, so let's say the town picks it up. What are we using the ESAR funds for?
Joe, Joe has a list.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he does, yeah.
I could spend your money.
You know, and, and don't forget too, we still have, the, the town has that, you know, million dollar set aside for spec overruns. There's a half a million dollars for COVID overruns. There's, you know, they, they, they paid the settlement fees last year for us. So the, the level of cooperation has been great, and I'd like to continue that. Any, any other discussion on old business budget?
The other thing I'd say is, I updated the questions, the questions that we got on Friday. A few folks sent some new questions in. I addressed some of them. A lot of them have to do with Chalkdale, which we'll have to try to schedule some time to try to go over there to see if there is anything over there. But, yeah, I think from question 15, question 15 to the end, those were new questions that had come in over the, over the weekend. They're not all fully answered, but I guess there's some more work to be done there.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to old business, item B, policy second review. Again, I'd like to start off the conversation. This is for the Policy 9311, Bylaws of the Board, Formulation, Adoption, and Amendment of Policies. As Shannon spoke about last meeting, there are four basic issues, I'm sorry, changes that were recommended on a split bill to Policy 9311. that were recommended on a split bill to policy 9311. The first one was the two-thirds vote versus a majority vote, which I think was to...
We were going with the simple majority.
Simple majority, but that was because in our policy, one had said two-thirds and one had said majority, so this was to balance the language out.
Just to make it uniform, right?
Okay.
Yes.
That was number one.
The second issue was to eliminate the at least three members to just three members. Third issue, to remove the wording "at least," where it says "at least reviewed annually." I'm on page two. And that might be too stringent for the policy committee to review everything every single year. And the fourth, also on page two, number three, who can recommend policy, and that policy has to be reviewed in a reasonable amount of time. So what I'm going to throw out there to everybody is, are there any one of these four issues that we have consensus on? And if so, then we should make a motion and adopt that policy. And maybe the issues that there's some contention on, we can have a discussion on it, and if there's no consensus, we just leave the policy the way it is. Just, Nick?
I, just speaking for myself, agree with the majority vote, that policy should be adopted by a majority vote. I also agree with the striking out of the words "at least" under point number two. I agree that it is extremely onerous to have a written policy, that the entire policy book has to be reviewed annually. And I disagree with the other three, striking out the language in point three, striking out the language in point five with the new language, and the striking out of "at least" in point one. I would reject all of those deletions and leave it as is.
So, so Nick?
Yes.
Do you agree with the?
One and three.
You agree with the, going with the simple majority, removing the two-thirds?
Yep, the top paragraph in blue, that's great, that's good. On the very top of the policy, all this striking out in red and the blue paragraph right at the top, that conforms to the majority vote, which is, that makes sense.
And then on number three, wait.
Sorry, I don't, process, point of order, question? Can we just go one item and go around? And see if we have consensus?
We could.
So I think we're there, right?
I think so. I think so. So for...
Let me ask this, is there, since Nick is attacking the first item, the two-thirds versus the majority on page one?
No, he's not, he slipped that.
Is there consensus on that item? Going around the room? There's no objection, right? That's really the...
No objections.
Okay, okay, that's good. There is objection concerning removing on page one "at least" for the makeup of the board, right? There's objection to that?
Yes.
Is there consensus on the page two, number two, to remove "at least"? Jerry's a yes, there's no objection to that?
No objection.
Okay. And there, is there any objection to page two, number three, who can recommend policy? There is objection to that?
Here too, yeah.
Okay, do we want to discuss the two that there's objection to, or do we want to make a motion with the two changes that we agree on, and the policy has changed with just those two?
And point number five as well.
I was going to say.
I'm sorry, and what's that one, Nick?
Point number five.
Go ahead.
Yeah, contention.
Reasonable time.
Reasonable amount of time? I included any of them.
As opposed to a prioritized basis.
Right. There's objection to that one?
There is.
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to discuss these three, or do we want to move the policy forward with the two changes that we all agree on?
We can move it forward.
Because how I feel about this is, no matter what the policy committee does, it still has to be a recommendation to the full board. These other issues are moot, in my opinion. Yes, Nick?
Well, I would, I don't think I would agree with that characterization, because in the new language in point number five, there now is no mandate for the policy committee to report back to the board.
No, he said he would strike that, Nick.
No. No. The blue language in point number five.
Right, but I thought we just said we objected to point five.
We did, that's what I'm saying.
Which means it would stay in.
It would stay in.
Which means it would stay in.
Oh, the blue would stay in, gotcha.
The blue would stay?
No, the red, the red would stay in.
The red would stay in.
It means we wouldn't change it.
It wouldn't be changed.
Right.
Only what we agree upon will be changed.
Only what we're agreeing upon now, right.
Anything that is not agreed upon will not be changed.
That's what I thought.
It will stay what it was.
Thank you.
So should we discuss?
So we're only making two changes, the two-thirds, the simple majority, and the "at least reviewed annually," right?
Yes.
Any further discussion on that? Do you, is, I think we should move forward with what we have consensus on.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah? Would someone like to make a motion that we change the policy with only those two recommendations? Nick! Nick has made a motion that the board adopt the policy changes with those two that we have discussed, the simple majority and the "at least reviewed annually," and all others will remain. Second by Jerry? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We shall move on to new business, number B, the approval of the 22-23 Board of Education meeting dates with a possible vote. Did everyone get these? Joe, any comments on? I know we have a couple of changes to Tuesdays for holidays, right?
Yeah, there's a couple of changes to Tuesdays with holidays. There's also one meeting in April. I think that's been the historical, because the other one usually falls into the April vacation. And then there's one scheduled in the month of July, and one scheduled in the month of August, which are usually hit or miss anyway.
We usually wind up canceling those, we can address them later on. Do I hear a motion to accept the approval of the 22-23 Board of Education meeting dates?
Motion to approve the calendar.
Dennis, seconded by Christine, any discussion? Nick?
Yeah, I just, I understand that we can, the policy committee can always call for special meetings. I just, you know, we talked about the policy committee and the backlog that is there for review, and there's only six meetings scheduled. So I don't know if it's easier to have more meetings scheduled and cancel what you don't need, or you can always call for a special meeting, but I think part of the problem that we ran into last year was some of this, so.
I agree, and I think Shannon and I have discussed this, as the policy committee needs to meet earlier, you know, to put, instead of a half hour, or if they need to start meeting earlier at 6:30, or if they should meet monthly until they get caught up, I think they should do that as the need is. Yep, and then we'll have to announce those and post them. Yes, Alan?
How far behind are we with policies?
We have probably three that we're on, that we're on an earlier agenda that we still need to get to, possibly four. There are probably three to four that there are revisions completed on that haven't made an agenda yet, and then there are probably as many as six to eight that have come in recent cave publications that were required to update. But do recall that on a more typical policy, where the revision is one of law, we can usually go through often three and four policies in a meeting. So I do believe that once we're through some of the like-theorizing policies that we have backed up on the agenda, I think some of the others we can get through rather quickly.
And Alan, they are scheduled for February, correct?
Very soon.
Scheduled for February, so I think once we get through the budget, I would encourage Shannon to move along, move along, schedule another meeting if the policy committee would so oblige. Any other discussion on the meeting dates? All those in favor? Aye, motion passes. Sorry, any objections? Nick? Okay, motion passes. Jerry?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Jerry, do I have a second? By Christine, any objections? Good night, everybody.
Good night, David.